Good afternoon. I call to order the August 25th Joint Meeting of the Glendale City Council and the Glendale Economic Development Corporation. May we have the roll call, please? For the council.
Council members divine.
Here.
Friedman.
Here.
Garpadian.
Here.
Sinanian.
Here.
Mayor Najarian.
Here. And for the EDC.
Board members divine.
Here.
Friedman.
Here.
Garpadian.
Here.
Sinanian.
Here.
Chair Najarian.
Here. May we have your report, please?
The agenda for the August 25th, 2015 Joint Public Meeting of the Glendale City Council and the Economic Development Corporation was posted on Friday, August 21st, 2015, on the bulletin board outside City Hall.
Thank you. What is the first item?
Item before you is, first of all, the adoption of minutes of a special city council meeting from August 18, 2015. Is there a motion to adopt those minutes?
So moved.
I'm sorry, what was the date? August 18.
Were we here?
August 18. We were not here.
We were not here, so I can't move.
I'll move it.
Mr. Sinan, would you second?
Oh.
Second, yeah.
Okay. And with no objections or corrections, the minutes will be approved as submitted. Next item, please.
Thank you. Next item is item two, Director of Economic Development, regarding Glendale Economic Development Corporation update on Art and Entertainment District Initiative. Two ways, the Glendale Economic Development Corporation motion to direct staff and develop a visitor attraction strategy for the Arts and Entertainment District.
Mr. Choa.
Yes, sir. We have for you a presentation that will give you a five-year snapshot that also hopefully will give some indication of what is coming for the next five years and certainly want to incorporate the council and board's direction and the ongoing iterative vision. To the extent that we have a strategy for the Arts and Entertainment District and really downtown Glendale, DTG as we commonly refer to it overall, we want to make sure that it is effectively a living plan, that it adjusts and changes and evolves with the various trends that we all see and experience. And so I'm going to run through the presentation and then between Phil and myself, we'll answer any questions and we have our staff here as well to talk about some of the challenges, opportunities, threats, and strengths of the district. So with that, we'll talk about the vision, we'll talk about the activity from '09 to present, some of the results and outcomes, we'll talk about what we're chasing now and really it is a chase. I think what you'll come to find and appreciate more than certainly most, and most, all of you have the strong understanding of economic development and some of you, by going down on, going in on sit downs on your own, as well as joining for recruitment trips to the International Conference of Shopping Centers, have a very good appreciation of the way that economic development is done, particularly in a post redevelopment environment. And then we'll talk about these ongoing next steps and new directions.
Hit the button.
Got it. Okay. So what is the vision? Eighteen-hour day. It's so refreshing to us that not only has the council adopted the vernacular, but also you hear it across all of our departments, all of our employees, and increasingly out in the marketplace itself, the businesses, the employers, the media, talking about Glendale's eighteen-hour day. And what do we mean by that? Basically, activity on the street, action out in a hustling, bustling downtown from early morning to late evening. And that means that we have different people coming in to work, later people coming in to eat, coming in to shop, coming in to live at this point. And so the idea that we have this mixed-use, mixed-income demographic that really is reflective of the overall community tapestry that is Glendale. When we get to the critical mass that really is the manifestation of the downtown-specific plan, you'll see that we are going to get into a high gear and kick into that high gear, start turning that flywheel, if you will, so that we are building and sustaining momentum on our own as opposed to what we've seen over these last 10 to 15 years overcoming the legacy reputation of what people originally came to understand and still lingeringly believe about downtown Glendale. We want to make sure that folks understand that this is a place to have fun, that this is a place for the arts and for culture in particular. As part of that, mobility is very important to us, moving people around the downtown. So if you think of the Arts and Entertainment District as the anchor that is two blocks long from the Lemley Theater at Wilson to the Central Library and the New Central Library at Harvard, that we can get you from there as well as through connectivity and walking, biking, and hopefully soon transit to move you through other parts of the downtown district. And so what you'll hopefully find in the downtown Glendale environment is a multipolar experience. You are in different places, all part of one community that is Glendale. You're in the Arts and Entertainment District, you're in the Americana, you're in the Galleria, you're at the North End, you're at Mid-Brand enjoying Alex Theater. So it can be many, many things, but still around one unifying theme, and that is the beauty of mobility in our downtown environment. The strategic developments that have taken place, and by strategic developments, I'm talking about the major multi-billion dollar investments in not only office, but also retail, commercial, and more recently apartment development. And that ultimately lends itself to building that critical mass, having people that will then generate the economic activity that feeds on itself. And then lastly, under achieving this critical mass, with the critical mass comes the utilization, the full utilization of the power of social media and technology. Increasingly, what we find is that the personal experiences made and replicated by what people tell one another, and they're able to tell them in a way and with a rapidity that has never been equaled in human history, and they're doing that to pull people into downtown Glendale.
This is, I'm sorry, Scott, this is an important point because when we started this vision, you all adopted it, you all being the Economic Development Corporation precursor, the redevelopment agency. 2009, social media really wasn't a player. It was emerging, but now it is something that we all need to pay attention to and we want to as part of that fun component that Scott was talking about.
Jim Collins talks about having a big hairy audacious goal in a good degree. And to the extent that our big hairy audacious goal for the downtown Glendale environment is that we will be the place in LA County for being the hip place to be. That is where we want folks to come and recognize that if you're going to meet somebody and you have the means to meet somebody anywhere in Los Angeles County, meet me on brand. Meet me there where everything is happening all at once on a suburban scale, on a scale that is still consistent with the rest of the fabric of Glendale overall. Downtown doesn't have to be equal to the rest of the activity in Glendale as a community, and the activity in Glendale as a community doesn't necessarily equal what happens in downtown. We can have this dynamic balance. And so truly, our audacious goal is to say that Glendale, downtown Glendale, will be the place to be, the premier location for arts and entertainment in LA County. Some folks are going to scoff at that because of what Glendale was over the last 20, 25 years, but I think when you take stock of all that's happened with this council and previous councils, it's something that people would not take lightly in the coming decade. So like anything else, there are challenges to this vision and as I mentioned, overcoming that legacy image. You know, when we do focus groups, when we had done the Last Citizen Satisfaction Survey and we'll do the next one coming up this fall and into the winter, you know, what do we hear about? Well, bedroom, it's a bedroom community. It's staid and it's stale and it's boring. And really, it hasn't been staid, stale, and boring in downtown Glendale for quite some time, but the hangover, the residual mentality of what Glendale was or is from the early 1990s or the early 1980s even, it does stick with you. And so we are changing it in very real and dynamic ways. Now, the other more palpable challenge that we have as an economic development corporation is the presence of the category killers, and that is a double-edged sword for us. On the one hand, when you think of sales tax generation in Glendale, we are, at the end of the day, a bedroom community. We have very few, very little of our land, available, buildable, land area is for commercial and retail. It's almost all, it's something like 80, more than 80% residential that's usable. And so when you think about where we actually generate those sales tax dollars from, they're primarily coming from the Galleria and from the Americana. And who's at the Galleria and the Americana? Those large national and international retailers that basically will knock out their category killers for some of those smaller independents that can't compete unless they get further away from the epicenter of those two, of those two centers, the Galleria and the Americana. So as I say, it's a double-edged sword. Would we trade the presence of Galleria and Americana brand? Absolutely not. But it does mean that we have a very unique challenge that many, many other cities don't have. But for my money, I think what you're starting to see is, again, with the critical mass coming, there's enough for everyone to come into Glendale.
It's a nice compliment. It is a double-edged sword because you think, well, okay, you've got your category killers, why can't you have your regional players here in the Arts and Entertainment District? People like the credit tenants because they're credit tenants. So we're constantly, if we're going to get involved with something, we're constantly reviewing, are they worth it? Are, can they pull it off? Do they have the financial resources to back them? That's a little more dicey, but it does create a nice niche away from the category killers. The double edge is, you've got to be careful where you go with it.
And so when you look at these waves of investment, when you look at Buffalo Wild Wings coming in, they're going to go into the marketplace, they will enliven that center. They absolutely will. For the type of space that is there, for the needs of that landlord, it very likely was not going to be some of the other people that we'll show you in a minute that were on our hit list, the actual defined list of retail and restaurant tenants that we chase after because of what the needs of that landlord tenant are. So when we talk about wading through those waves, well, as the first wave of resident into the downtown Glendale environment comes in, they will bring with them a great deal of activity. And they will go to BJ's and they will go to Buffalo Wild Wings and they'll go to all these other locations, especially the larger recognized chains, and somebody, invariably, somebody will get the idea, you know what? I'm a bartender at Bourbon Steak, I can open up my own spot further up on brand where the rents may be a little bit less and I have a unique hook that I can bring somebody into. And I'm going to open up my store up there. I can open up my restaurant, my bar, whatever the case is. We think increasingly, given the latitude that the city council has given us in the Arts and Entertainment District, they will migrate here in that second and third wave of investment. They will become smarter, better capitalized with private money, and again, they begin to feed on themselves. So at this point, in its still relative infancy, first five years of the Arts and Entertainment District, we still see the need to seed different opportunities with economic development money, possibly old redevelopment money, possibly other funds from other restricted parts of the city budget that can only go for certain functions. I'll give you an example, to the extent that we have an interest in expanding mobility. Those funds generally are not going to come for transit, for example, from the general fund. We would try our best to shoehorn those into our transit funds that come to us for, you know, transit purposes. If we are looking to make major infrastructure improvements, we would like, and hopefully not just whistling past the graveyard, that we could utilize old redevelopment bond funds as they come available. So there are monies out there to make some of these investments in the larger scale because they are expensive, but you will also have that opportunity under the Economic Development Corporation to play on a much smaller scale. To the extent that we have local businesses, local restaurants that want to take the next leap and expand, well, we can help seed that effort. Not to say we can be all things to all people and it will be on this board to be very strategic as to where to place those different seeds because one business expanding may have a much more catalyzing impact than other businesses, most definitely. We do have a good deal of advantages, and I don't want to oversell the challenges that we face, but the advantages are manifold. To the extent that we are in downtown Glendale blessed to have public parking lots, public assets, public garages, to the extent that we truly are one of the older cities in the region that has our civic center and civic and quasi-public amenities in the downtown, we have the opportunities to be creative, whether it is utilizing parking, surface parking lots for other developments, as long as we replace the parking, or if it's collaborating with quasi-public, nongovernmental agencies like we did with the YMCA to bring housing and other amenities to the downtown, we have a tremendous opportunity that other cities really don't have by virtue of our geography and our history. And speaking of history, as an older city, we also have a number of historical assets and you're seeing one be reused now in the Masonic Lodge that has been, when I lived here in the early 1990s, that was a noise within. And you never really knew about what happened within unless you went to watch a play. But it was this big building that just stuck out there. Well, to the extent now, you're going to have four floors of CBRE, Commercial Real Estate Brokers, that are working, shopping, eating, selling Glendale, selling Glendale, critically important for us, and that wouldn't have happened without the preservation of that particular historic asset. We have tremendous strategic partners, to the extent that General Growth, one of the largest mall operators in the world, Caruso affiliated, one of the most prestigious and accomplished outdoor mall and commercial real estate developers in the country, are our partners that are within a phone call or email to actually make real meaningful contact with them is a major benefit to us. I can tell you that the reemergence of the office sector going from a height of 25% vacancy in Class A office down to about 13% in Class A office, and recognizing that in Glendale, you're probably never going to get below 10% just because of the trading of the spaces as people move in and out of offices, that has had an enormous impact on what we see in our sales tax generation and the activity in the downtown. We need to be able to capture it. Lastly, in terms of strategic partners, I need to emphasize the role of the Downtown Glendale Association. To the extent that we have a business association that is funded by the businesses, we do participate as a property owner of the downtown, but to the extent that they are assessing themselves and taking upon themselves to heighten the level of manicured streets and sidewalks and amenities, it actually goes a tremendous distance for us in creating this sense of place. And it is this emerging sense of place that really speaks back to the policymaking purview that this board has in terms of bringing together the downtown-specific plan and coupling that with the good timing and the proper execution of that plan such that we have this strategic degree of development at this point in time. As Phil had mentioned, leveraging social media, and I need to emphasize, to build a personal experience. Nobody sells anybody anything anymore on, and if you've been watching or you watched the final series or season of Mad Men, that world doesn't exist anymore. This is all about Yelp. This is all about, did you see somebody tagged at the Famous who was having a great time and that was a wonderful place? We need to go back there and we will go there. And next thing you know, they are bringing their friends, they're talking about it, and you're building the snowball rolling downhill. That leveraging of social media is critically important and through Tom Lorenz and Tom Marsads' efforts, it's something that is pushing us ever forward at a pretty rapid pace. Lastly, the shifting demographics and preferences favor us because people are moving and will continue to move into downtown and the lifestyle, the urban setting on a suburban scale, that dynamic balance is what we can offer and very few places can. We do engage on a number of economic development fronts. Again, this is not redevelopment. The old days of us buying a bunch of property, clearing it, cleaning it, tying it together and then selling it at a discount to a developer are gone. For us, the issue, the plan and the program is economic development. We are facilitators. We are fishermen and professional anglers looking for those opportunities to marry up the needs of employers, landowners, people with underutilized assets, and we're doing that more and more. Again, I have, you see the picture there in the upper right hand of the CBRE space. That is, that deal moved at glacier-like speed with the City of Glendale Economic Development Corporation, constantly pushing the parties together, pushing them forward. It died a dozen times before it ever really got off the ground. I'd like to think that we had some small degree of effort or success in participation with that project.
The landlord engagement that we're talking about happens in many different formats. It may be one of you visiting a restaurant that you really like and say, hey, go talk to him about that. It might be a chat with a broker and you're shooting the breeze and something comes up, light bulb goes off, there's an opportunity. Probably the top and the bottom bullet are the biggest change that we've had in economic development in setting ourselves apart from everybody else. We're out there looking, we're digging. What is going on with your property? What's going on with your tenant? Gee, really would like to get out? Hey, I've got somebody that might take that and start to marry them up. Those things, and then the concierge service giving personal point, a single point of contact, making it easier to get through our process, probably the two biggest things that set us apart when we're out dealing in the difference between economic development even five years ago and today.
When we talk about the guerrilla marketing, the idea that marketing promotions through online sources, through all of the social media apparatus has become actually quite inexpensive. You know, we can fire lots of BBs, it isn't about firing cannonballs anymore. We still have a few of those cannonballs and through GTV6 and through our graphics unit, as you see some of the materials that we put there on the lower right-hand corner, we can, we do, we will, there is a need for some of that more traditional marketing and even some promotions and events. But to the extent that we can utilize, we can utilize Pinterest, we can utilize Facebook, we can utilize any of the social media apparatus, our batting average doesn't have to be 1,000 because no one ever hits 1,000, but to the extent that we'll be able, over the long term, to send enough information out that is unique and specific to a different audience that will continue to bring them back to Glendale has been and is a very powerful tool. I would tell you that through the World Games that we were recently a part of, My Glendale was able, which is our hashtag, ends up getting out to millions and millions of people, starting from 150,000 and growing exponentially from then, that know what it is that we're doing and wanting to think about coming to this place that is City of Glendale. You saw it more recently in the LA Magazine article where Sir Patrick Stewart was, I was about to make a crack about Star Trek, but then we're hoping to bring him here, so I won't do that. But that he talks about Glendale and the idea of, you know, we are at the edge of Hollywood. I mean, we are an entertainment sector in and of ourself. We have a number of entertainment workers here populating those office towers. That's where a lot of that growth has come, so to the extent we can bring them in, leverage them and leverage their contact and apparatus, so much the better because they're selling Glendale just like us. Phil mentioned the concierge and the incentives that we have, and truly, the game has changed. It is not redevelopment anymore. You know, we are short on money but long on the ability to facilitate. To that end, we realize that time is money and it makes no sense for us to waste your time if you are a broker, if you are a landlord, if you are a person looking to do business by, you know, being very unclear about what it is that the city council tells us that they want. So truly, there is a hit list. We meet with the brokerage community on a regular basis saying, bring us these people. We can get you through the process, we can give you that single point of contact. We are part of the pitch team. There is not a broker who is working and hustling in this community, and I will, I say this very directly, there's not a broker who is working or hustling in this community that does not have either Phil's and/or mine and/or Darlene and/or Sharon's direct contact and/or cellphone number. And that is by design because we want them to have the confidence, even if they don't have to make that call while they're there on a sit-down with a client, a prospective client, that they have at least the confidence that, shall I get somebody from the city on the phone that can answer your question, that can tell you that you will have a positive experience. Those types of personal relationships go a very, very long way in getting some of these deals done. So we are part of that pitch team. We don't waste their time vis a vis the hit list, but in terms of the concierge permitting, I can tell you, I just left a meeting earlier this afternoon where the idea that you have one point of contact to take you through all of our different departments from GWP to Fire to CDD Building and Planning, that makes a big difference because we're able to empathize, we're able to help see what the solution could be and get you to a point where we can say yes. We are trying to be as creative as we possibly can with our assigned programs and permits, and in the Arts and Entertainment District, the council has allowed us to weave into the zoning, the ability to put in place CUPs without any additional amount of review or red tape. The idea that if you are in that Arts and Entertainment District, you can open up one of those selected types of uses, a nightclub, a comedy club, a theater, a bar, a restaurant, and not have to worry about all of the ancillary approvals that go along with that were used someplace else. That can happen here and people are beginning to take us up on that offer. In terms of the infrastructure grant programs or building infrastructure grant programs, something that, again, a holdover from the redevelopment days, but this is something that we would do on a much smaller scale and really on a much more performance-tested basis. If you needed $150,000 for your fire sprinkler system, that's what the pro forma indicates that you're short. We've looked at the business plan, we see that it's viable, we believe that the concept makes sense. We can break that investment up over a period of time, so as long as you hit those sales tax numbers, we can start to rebate some of that money because the idea is that the sum is, or the whole is more than just the sum of the parts. We've had great success in getting people interested in wanting to apply for that program.
But remember, we will keep the parts of the program that make sense to us. We're going after systems, we're going after things that improve the building. So if for whatever reason you don't hit that, we still have our investment in place for the next tenant to come and use it. Very successful.
So we are generating the momentum. You saw it over the course of these last, these last few years and in the last few months in particular, the downtown scene is really beginning to emerge and you see that folks want to come downtown. There's still a few haters that are out there, I think, to the extent that, wow, it's still the same old Glendale, but when was the last time you'd been there? Well, maybe it's been a few years. Come and try it again because we have the, one of the best collections of restaurants, fine dining, bars, bistros, the whole nine yards. And with the advent of Antias Theater, we will have the live entertainment to go along with the movies. It really is a cultural hub. And at the same time, therefore, we want to make sure that we don't lose the art in the Arts and Entertainment District. We need to make sure that through the Economic Development Corporation in close contact with library arts and culture, that we are putting our best foot forward on public art, whether it's small scale like the utility box paintings to something that's much more large scale, like the major renovation of the Alex Theater, the new Lemley Theater that's going in at Wilson and Maryland, and trying to bolster existing users like the Five Star Synod to make sure that they are as successful as they can, all the while attracting other folks like Antias into the Arts and Entertainment District.
So we're trying to judge, we're showing you images, we're talking about social media buzz hype, some people want to get down to brass tacks, tell me what it's done for me. We tried to estimate that, given the businesses that have come in over the last five years or so, about 1,000 jobs, 215,000 square feet of commercial, the $500,000 in incremental annual general fund revenue, that is something from '09 to 2015, we've looked at this area and the bump is that much. It is from the new restaurants that are coming where that's taxable sales for us. 20% increase in downtown parking revenues, we've actually looked at our books, people are using the garages more and that's where that 20% increase comes. So while we're talking about buzz, we're talking about people being there, coming from other parts, we're seeing a real benefit to the City of Glendale that we translate back into other services and goods.
When we talk about, what are we chasing now? Because I think we have, are ready to leave second gear and get into that third gear and beyond. It is more of the regional profile. We need to get folks that are going to elevate the Glendale brand. And so to the extent that it is live entertainment, comedy, music, as well as the higher-end bar and grill concepts, there will be some that you see from, here is the notorious hit list, there are some that you see that are nationals, but they do have their own style, their own, their own brand. Much of these folks however, many of these folks however, are independents, they're regionals. And so you see some are expansions, some are relocations, but at the end of the day, these, I think the common theme that you'll see through these are they are gathering spots. To the extent that we are, yes ma'am?
Boy, you're so fast. It's okay. I just moved, I didn't put my hand up. No, that's okay. No, I do have a question though, you were anticipating, I do have a question.
We have a copy of that hit list?
Yeah. What is Dave and Buster's, are they like, isn't that like Chuck E. Cheese or am I?
Chuck E. Cheese for like, grownups?
For adults, yeah.
It's a game and game sports bar, video game.
I kind of think of that as being more of like a mall kind of thing than something we'd want in a classy Arts and Entertainment District.
That's a, because it's all about being classy.
You know, that's like, stay classy, isn't that Glendale?
But these are, this is a list of people, some of them we're still.
What's Happy?
Going after. Happy is a comedy club and interesting story. This is where we had that meeting with an owner, broker, hey, you know, we're trying a new concept, we'd like to see if a comedy club would work. If it does, do you know of anybody? We partner them up. Yeah, we're just talking to somebody. So now Happy will be, they will have their first presentation at Pierre Garden on September 19.
Is El Compadre, is that the one from Hollywood?
Several.
With the flaming margaritas?
Yeah.
Okay. And Church and State, is that actually a possibility or did you just put that on there because it's one of the best restaurants in Los Angeles?
Two things. It's one of the best and we're chasing. And to the extent that folks who never thought of, totally different scale, I grant you that, but to the extent that when we went chasing King Taco, they said, really? Glendale? And we said, yeah, Glendale. And brought them in, showed them around and said, you know, there is lots of activity, lots of action, lots of different customers here. I don't think anything is beyond us. We, you see Yard House on there. Yard House told us, no. We, you see Yard House on there. Yard House told us no six ways.
Church and State I could see, but Roscoe's, you think there's a chance?
I do think there's a chance for Roscoe's. I think there's a very good chance.
I would remind you, Councilwoman Friedman, six, seven, eight years ago, when you sat down with Mayor Najari and Avery Dennison, and they said, "Thank you very much for the trip over."
Did we sit down with them twice and they said that to us?
Probably. We will keep after them because breakfast is a place, is a niche that is not being served as well as it could be. And as we grow in our downtown population, that's something that we think we want to help drive.
I would just, oh, sorry.
Go ahead. No, no. Oh, go ahead.
On the Dave and Buster thing, just to kind of close the loop on that, to the extent that you have the old linens and things space, that is a tough, tough space to fill because it's built as a linens and space, and you have the big pillars that are there subdividing that space and the access, it's very, very difficult. So 33,000 square feet on a second floor next to a gym, I hear you. We will take that under advisement.
Are any of these on the hit list establishments that will stay open later than 10 o'clock? Because I think Glendale really needs a place that stays open until very late, very late for those that go to the theater or are somewhere else having dinner, come back, walk around a bit, and then want to sit down and have just a bite or, you know, a cocktail or something.
They are, to the extent.
What's staying open? That's a great point.
Conrad's. Conrad's is the only place, I think, in town, yeah.
To the extent people will patronize it, they will definitely stay open. They're adept at, you know what, on Tuesday nights, we're not seeing anything because everybody's watching the council meeting and they don't come out.
Good point, good point, Phil.
And they'll change their hours. So most definitely, one of the main reasons that the Arts and Entertainment District, we thought about locating it on Maryland, is it self-contained. And we can have people there till 2:00 in the morning, having fun, stumbling, not stumbling, walking out, leaving the whatever venue they're in. You're having fun. You're talking. You're laughing. We don't bother anybody. And that's why the main core of the Arts and Entertainment District was selected and why we're encouraging late night. You're going to be at a theater. You want to stop by there for after dinner.
Try to focus on hours 16, 17, and 18.
Exactly, yeah.
And also, that ties into the public transportation option that we were exercising and we were talking about. There was a presentation yesterday at Transportation and Parking Commission regarding the private rapid transit that, it's a very, very, very interesting concept. I think we should look into it. It's being done in large cities at this point. They're studying it. Israel's been using it for a while. And this is an awesome system. I encourage my colleagues to take a look at it and have a report for us as to how would that fit into Glendale. And you can have a big concert somewhere and move everybody out in five minutes with this system. And they can build, this was the very interesting part of it, that they can build one mile every three days, one mile of route every three days. So I think we should look into it. I asked Mr. Saikan, Commissioner Saikan, to have a report done and have somebody, one of the consultants, to come in and present a little demonstration or presentation for the Parking and Transportation and Parking Commission yesterday. I think they were really awed. And I think we need to look into that and make that part of our strategic plan on transportation.
We will get that presentation because looking at it online, it was really cool.
Yeah, yeah.
And it beats a pneumatic tube that goes from one part of the city to the other.
Yeah, I've been looking at this option for over a year. It's very new and it's, I think it could be implemented in Glendale. It's really fast. Get to Burbank Airport in six minutes.
Yes, we will get you, we'll get you the whole presentation. So as you're out there, if you want to go on a crawl for all of these different locations, you'd be doing some good work for us and do a little bit of recon and get it back to us.
I have a question with the restaurants. You know, when you put something up like Church and State, I mean, they're not going to open Church and State too. But what you'll see is someone who's a junior chef or a chef wanting to open another. So do you go to LA Taste? Or do you go to, you know, the places where you'll most likely to run into restaurant groups, chefs that are looking to find their next location?
Both. You do both of those in our experience. And part of it is, I have a brand that I don't want to compete against, but I will split off and do something else in a different market where I'll take everything I've learned, repackage it, and do it over here. So, yeah, you may not see Church and State.
Where's Revolution Taco, by the way?
You know, I don't know. I don't know where it is on that list. It's not there.
Partial list.
Just because they were showing them around.
Yes. So, but no, and that's, we're looking.
What is it called again? Revolution Taco?
It's a, it's a
Good stuff.
They are Glendale residents, so they wanted to open a branch here. It wasn't just something I pulled out of nowhere. I mean.
No, I'm sure, I'm sure.
In terms of the things that we look at, and to Councilman Garpetian's point, mobility, parking, circulation, critically important to us. And that's looking at, as Phil had indicated, the indicators by way of our revenues, by way of our parking utilization, and as the council knows, by investing in technology. So soon, the electronic upgrade to all of our garages will be in place. We'll know how the spaces get used, when they get used, what times of the day they get used most. We do think that at some point that will lend itself, and hopefully sometime soon, for the advent of new parking. And that new parking really doesn't even need to be in the downtown if we can start to migrate out the use of existing spaces by our good partners and the auto dealerships to another location that's better, more central to them and not in the downtown. Yes, ma'am.
I know we've talked for a long time, and they do this in other cities like Burbank where office buildings let the city use their parking, so the shared parking. So where are we with that? Why, it seems like such an easy thing for us to do if we indemnify them, you know, use our insurance to cover them in the evenings. Why is that not going on?
Two things. We do have one shared parking concept on the 400 block of the north end. And that's about as far as we've seen folks, if you think north of, what is it, Lexington or California?
Lexington.
Lexington, north of Lexington, not nearly as much activity. And so as we
Although with Lemley, you might.
Exactly. And so the idea that we can take stock of the spaces that are there, be able to move people around in a way that's safe and convenient and predictable and very short head times, that might be the best way to take advantage. As it sits today, not a lot of interest from the rider or from the office owner.
What about at least the valet services for the various restaurants?
They could, but they still find headaches and all. It's still easier to park nearer to where the car is being dropped off versus three blocks up or two blocks up. They want to be, because somebody has to run back and forth. We just haven't gotten to that point yet where the demand will overwhelm the relative hardship. The other aspect of this is that, as you've seen, the increase in our, or the decrease in the Class A office, the office landlords are increasingly less willing to allow us to utilize spaces because they need them more and they need to make sure that those spaces are available to late workers, swing, whatever the case might be. So until there's a real pressing need where we can push that button, we really have not yet. And as I say, the experiment that we have in the 400 block is, you know, it's nice to have, but I don't know that it is the most efficient space that we have in our portfolio.
I just hope that we have it fully utilized before you come back and start talking about building new lots.
Absolutely.
And would that also kind of be the point where we look at some sort of a downtown transportation, a jitney or a little double-decker or some sort of transportation like that to get people from that end of town to the arts district or shopping?
Most definitely. The idea that you can move blocks in a matter of minutes in a way that's kind of fun, open air, you know, that's very regular in terms of the service, it comes down to that function of money. So when we do our update for council as directed on the mobility study later this fall, we'll have some cost estimates for you. And regardless of what those estimates are, at some point, we'll cross a threshold where it makes sense to do it because we have to. We have to push people in different locations to maximize utility.
And I have to say that we were, Councilmember Garpetti and I were just in your van and, you know, they have big buses and taxis and cars and everything. But the most popular, it seems, mode of transportation is this little bus. It holds, I think, about 12 people and they're packed. And one of the wives from our group with a friend took that little mode of transportation and just loved it. So I think that's, you know, it's kind of something we can be looking at.
It's telling. We got word from our friends at Crusoe Affiliated that they want to talk about bringing back the shuttle. And so to the extent that they're and willing to participate in the funding of it, that tells you that we're approaching that threshold and probably sooner than we know.
Okay.
Are we going to approach the threshold of having a subway station in Glendale at some point?
I think that threshold is a little further off on the horizon.
Yeah, because everyone has that too.
Yeah, that would be a much better thing to replicate here, subway.
Certainly. We look at trends. We look at the market. We try to stay as close as we can to the retail brokerage and the commercial brokerage community. There are many more of them than there are of us and their job is to sell Glendale. So we listen to what they have to say and try to leverage them. We look at our sales tax reports and we try our best without being, predatory is too harsh a word, without being opportunistic to identify those weaker users that have leases that are coming up, that we can then try to marry people together for the benefit of bringing a new business to town that's more sustainable. Looking to the future, concepts to consider. As the council knows, we had a study done, we believe, based, if you've ever tried to get a hotel room without a reservation in Glendale, somewhere in the downtown, especially near the Arts and Entertainment District, it is tough. Our occupancy rates are regularly well above 80%. And so the study that we have recently completed indicates 350 to 450 room nights, taking into account the Hyatt that will soon be constructed at Central End Wilson. That means, one, probably two, hopefully boutique hotels in and around the Arts and Entertainment District and could very well be utilizing the amenities and the assets that I talked about earlier, our parking lots, parking garages, other assets that the city might have. The idea is to leverage that which you have before you go and buy anything else. So there is, it's very telling. And I'm sure council members, Sinanian and Garpetian, who were there at ICSC, will tell you that the interest from the development community, hotel development community is palpable to say the least. And so we have a good deal of interest, again, from the boutique brands of the larger chains.
If we're going to be in Arts and Entertainment District, an artist program, the critical mass that we talked about will attract this. It's important for us to be on board with Downtown Glendale Association and make sure that we have something that isn't just, hey, come onto our street and do whatever. There are programs in other cities, San Francisco comes to mind, where the artists are prescreened, they're given locations, that's their location today. There's somebody that manages the whole thing. We may not be there yet, but these are concepts that we'd like to look to, to enhance the Arts and Entertainment District.
Would you envision the Arts and Cultural Commission having any hand in the screening or no? You would just kind of streamline it?
It could be that the Arts and Culture Commission are screeners. You probably want to make sure that whoever's managing that program is involved in that screening because that's who is going to be dealing with them day to day.
My, I think it's a very good idea. It'd be very interesting. My strong recommendation with both the arts and the crafts is that you make sure that the people that are selling are actually people who make these. A lot of craft shows, even ones that are very close to here, I see a lot of people selling things that I know are crafts in, you know, in quotation fingers that are purchased from various places.
Maybe they glue a button on top and call it a craft.
Right, from China, from, you know. So I think it's important that, you know, we want to make this to be something that really is special and unique and we find people that really are artists and really are craftspeople. And then you could have something very interesting.
The idea that we do have some performers, want to make sure that the performers are of the same caliber and quality and regulated, to a reasonable degree within the confines of the law, as the city attorney would opine, we can put these together in A&E as well.
Just to go back a little bit, you know, my one concern about the other, about this sort of artists and that when you do too much screening, I mean, you want it to have some authenticity. You want it to have some grassroots feeling to it. And you could get a little too carried away and make it just sort of more of a corporate kind of thing where you take anything that's at all interesting or at all risky out of the equation. So when you do this, you've got to, I think it's going to be difficult, but to find a way where you do have people that really are artists, but that you give them enough latitude that maybe they're not showing something, you know, patently obscene or offensive, but that you let people express themselves and do something that is, something maybe that you wouldn't just see at the Americana, something that's a little bit more urban, a little bit more specific to Los Angeles and Glendale.
I think the thing that, the statement, the comment that you made, make sure they're artists, that's really what the screening is about. Not somebody selling something that's made in China. They really are an artist and so it's a genuine product. Maybe it's a little edgy, maybe it's a little bit out there, and we should allow for that if it's going to be interesting. So when we talk about screening, we're talking about actually an artist. So I think.
And somewhere between what I would call plop art, those things that are so conventional and so safe, they're just boring, to something that is maybe a little too risque for something that is ultimately facilitated by a public agency, that's a pretty wide universe. And I think in that spectrum, we can come back with something that meets the test that you're talking about.
And hopefully, we encourage a lot of different people to apply and people that you wouldn't necessarily, you know, think, people that are, I don't want to discourage people from just kind of coming and displaying. I mean, I know you want to have some parameters and there's some safety issues in terms of people just setting up stuff anywhere. But, you know, within that, we have to allow some flexibility.
The, I think truly, the most guiding, all that said, I think the most guiding factor in all of this is going to be from legal.
And I do think that Arts and Culture might have a hand in just setting this up. Not that I think they should be screening everybody because I really don't. I want to avoid that. But maybe in setting this program up and promoting it to the artist community, they could be, help the way they were with the utility box program.
I can assure you that it will not be Phil and myself.
Let me just ask a few questions then about licensing them. So are we going to make them pay a fee for the license? Are we going to make them have insurance? Like the Chainsaw Juggler, that's kind of edgy.
Yeah.
The Naked Cowboy from New York, is that what they call them? The Naked Cowboy?
I have not yet.
Is that what they call them? You know, where are we going to start drawing the line? Who's going to make these decisions? Do we get a cut of their revenue? Can they amplify their music?
Yeah, that's another issue I was going to ask. Street performers and
It's a big
These are concepts that we want to bring to you if there's some interest in them. We want to develop all of that for you. And so we have those answers. But yes, there would be some, a fee, that's your spot. And that's their business. They sell their art.
When you look at the City of Santa Monica's regulation, it is a small phone book. I mean, it is very thick. And understandably so because they've, I think they've battle-tested every different facet of this thing, but still are able to find ways to allow people to express themselves, but in a way that is still appropriate for the public realm. We'd be looking to do something that is right for Glendale, but probably has enough of those safeguards, certainly so it does not become a liability for the council, either figuratively or literally.
Let me ask a hot question. If there's a marijuana initiative put on the ballot and that passes, do we have the right to preclude dispensaries or other retail sales of that in this downtown area? Because, you know, arts, entertainment, bars.
Well, we'll have to see what the initiative will
It's a gateway system.
Mr. Mayor, we'll have to see what the initiative says. As far as I know, the legislation that's been considered by the state legislature and the initiatives have all, at least paid lip service to the concept of maintaining local control. But you have to, you have to actually see when an initiative is put forward, how far it goes.
I'm just thinking out loud, looking. What we're envisioning for downtown, is it pretty much along the same lines of what we're doing in Montrose when they have the art festival, that they bring their, you know, their crafts and their art pieces and artists bring their products and sell and they paint? And is it pretty much in the same line or is it going to be on an ongoing basis, like every day we will have that?
It could be on an everyday basis. Pick a part of town and people actually have, there's a lottery for spots and then that's your spot. And it happens every day and people know that they can go and see the street art or street artists in that location. It could be that they're set up at different parts around downtown and not concentrated. And so there's something of interest all around. It's something that we would like to explore a little bit more and then bring those concepts to you, with a recommendation on where and Whether recommendation on where, and how, and how much?
And the where has a big part of it, because if we did it in Central Park and the Paseo that would run along the south side of the renovated building and shooting straight to the west to Brand, that might facilitate something every day. If you said, no, it really needs to be on Maryland north of Harvard, for whatever reason, then maybe it doesn't really work well, because it ends up crowding out the businesses that are there trying to establish themselves. So a lot of it will ultimately depend on where.
And that might be a way of attracting people to the other, to the north side of the city, too.
And have them go in tandem, right. I mean, there's different ways to do it, but to the extent, as Phil points out, we want to throw different ideas out there, because some things that we might believe as your staff are interesting ideas, council may say absolutely not, because it's a slippery slope from, you know, having art displays to puffing a fatty, and that's just not what we want to see.
Say what?
He said it was a gateway, so it's just.
Oh, puffing a fatty? We should move on.
We keep Phil here to keep me out of trouble. So, other items cited, seeing shopping, tourists, this is actually something that's gotten a lot of traction, particularly with our friends at Caruso and at the Galleria. We have been a destination, especially along the Pacific Rim shoppers, people who are here who are tourists, they get on a bus, they come, and God bless them, they spend lots of money at those two venues. Enhancing the infrastructure by putting in place a public Wi-Fi system as we shore up the ISD department, as you know, that's been a multi-year task, and looking to the horizon the next five years, putting in place the next iteration of public Wi-Fi, either in the downtown or specifically in the Arts and Entertainment District, might be something that is making a lot of sense to us, considering that we have the library, you have Mona, you have the Antaeus with its library there inside of the theater, that you will get a good deal of students that want to take advantage of this, as well as just general public. The Maryland Promenade, to the extent that we would like, at some point, if we can free up the funds, to take part of Maryland, if not the entire stretch of Maryland at the exchange, and turn it into, either with retractable bollards or with an absolute or a permanent installation, to make that a public gathering space. And maybe that's where we do art displays, maybe that's a community gathering spot, but it's something that everybody can rally around, just a function of money. The honorary, kind of pivoting off of the Sir Patrick Stewart article in L.A. Magazine, you know, we have a number of folks that either work in town, live in town, or work in the industry that are here in town in the entertainment business.
What was the article, I'm sorry?
I'm sorry, what?
Does he live in Glendale or something?
No, he reminisces about going to Charles Billiards and the elegance of Glendale as this.
The Star Trek guy?
No, Picard.
He was knighted, he's a knight.
Sir.
But he still, he still comes to Glendale for diversity and food and the Alex Theater or whatever.
Was the Billiards where Giggles is now? Is that where?
No, Charles.
Still there.
Still there across the street.
Yeah, remnants of a wasted youth.
Oh, okay.
But we have so many of these folks, and our goal is to increase the profile. I mean, why not, for those, and for, whether you like it or not, this culture of celebrity that we live in, why not take advantage of the folks that Glendale is on the, is the location film spot for Ray Donovan, and/or other shows that we have here in town? We can make those folks honorary members of this board, and send them a picture of the Economic Development Board with your face here, and let them show the official portrait, share the official portrait with you.
A tour of homes.
You know, we actually made HBO for like, two episodes.
We did?
Yeah, True Detectives, the main character, the criminal slash good guy moved to Glendale from somewhere.
They were up there.
Well, we're actually on a couple of TV shows right now that are, that use Glendale and 134 and the freeway, and yes.
Nobody says this stuff can't be fun, and I think the extent we have some fun with it, so much the better. Because again, to the extent that we're utilizing social media where each shot is relatively inexpensive, we could take lots of shots and have lots of fun, and still be able to do it in a way that represents the best part of Glendale.
Did you see, did you get the link I sent you about West Hollywood's YouTube video about, you know, we need a little, I mean, we do it, I think, we do a good job of having fun, but they just kicked us to the curb with that one.
Had a little too much fun in that particular.
Okay, so, all right, so West Hollywood has a street closure, I should have it by heart after watching that, I think it's La Cienega between Dohini and Sunset is closed for major street work. So do you know that Saturday Night Live skit, the Los Angelians or whatever, where they talk about?
The Californian.
Oh, the Californians, where they're always talking about how they got places? They did that, and they got the cast from Saturday Night Live, some of them to do it. It's very funny.
They're West Hollywood, though.
West Hollywood, that's what I'm saying. Yeah, but we're at Glendale. We could have a lot of fun.
But you could have fun with a lot of different people.
Who are generally good sports.
Yeah.
Again, high profile, high impact, low cost. To wrap up, the Arts and Entertainment strategy, it is working in five years from where we were to where we are. We have a lot of work to do, but we are clearly making headway in progress, to the extent that we are, I think, at a point where we are going to jump into the third and fourth gears and take advantage of all of the strategic development and investment that's taken place to date. We are in a very good place. When we talk about this critical mass and leveraging private apartment developments, they are here, however we may feel about some of the projects, they will bring residents, those residents will be part of this community, and to the extent that we can make their community involvement something that benefits the larger Glendale population, so much the better. The new amenities, hotel, arts programming and promotions, you will see more and more of that come together, especially on the hotel front, but as we've already heard some of the great direction from council on the arts programming, we do have funding for arts, specifically for arts, and so we can actually make a pretty good splash on that front. The focus on mobility is something that is somewhat in a bifocal range. We know that we have needs, and there are things that we can do by way of pedestrian, bicycling, and automobile circulation, but we can't lose sight of the larger picture of how do we move larger numbers of people around town and from the region to Glendale, if indeed our goal, our audacious goal is to be the central spot in LA, in all of LA County, as the scene, as the place to be. We have to be able to get people here. So it takes into account all of the short-term and long-term efforts that this council, and in particular Mayor Najarion's role on MTA, the opportunities that come our way with the next call for projects, and the R2 spending. Lastly, this notion of personal experience, everything happens through personal experience, it seems nowadays. And so to the extent that DGA is able to cultivate a very safe, clean environment, the downtown policing unit makes you feel safe, makes you feel secure, that the food is good, the mixed drinks are better, the crowd is the best and brightest of not just Glendale, but the entire region, I think that we can feed on, through social media, feed on the success that we've had, and take the downtown Arts and Entertainment District to a level that really had not even been contemplated even five years ago. You know, this notion of what's your brand, you'll see more and more as we move forward with our marketing program, inviting people to meet me on brand and tell us their story, tell us what your brand is, and we'll do it as Councilmember Friedman indicates, in a very fun and hip way. I think you'll be able to say that we will have fun, we will be memorable, and we will be original in something that the entire community, whether you live in downtown or downtown adjacent or in the hills, something that, where brand is the place you want to be. With that, we will be happy to answer any questions. All of our staff is here, as well as Tom Lorenz, who is our social media guru, our Deputy Director for Mobility and Design, Alan Loomis is with us as well, and so we'd be happy to accept any direction or questions from the council.
I have a, I guess, part of it's a reiteration. I do think that Ms. Devine's comment about getting the restaurants to stay open longer is really critical, because it, you know, after, usually if you're not seated by 10 o'clock at one of the, I'm not talking about the fast food places, but the decent places, they just will end up, they close at 11:00. That's kind of, that's only a 16-hour day, I think.
What about Jack's? Are they open very late?
Jack serves food only till midnight, but they're open till 2:00, I think.
Right. But Jack's is sort of a narrow niche, because you can't really go and converse there. The beauty of Jack's is the live music.
Yeah, it's loud.
So if the council, I'm not sure, you know, if the council would be willing to write a letter encouraging the owners to consider extended hours, at least on the weekend, tell them that we think they would be a good idea and would be profitable to them.
One, it's a letter we can do, something that down the road would be a great vehicle. We're working on a restaurant district, and we've invited a lot of the restaurateurs. In fact, Sharon just had the first task force meeting today. Ultimately, that would be something we could bring to them, and they, as a group, could say, let's agree to do this, let's agree to do it on Wednesday through Sunday, or Wednesday through Saturday, and use that as a vehicle to try and get that. Letters, encouragement, we can do that before the actual assessment district gets up and running.
Just kind of make sure that, kind of make sure that when you talk to them, that you let them know that we are interested in late hours for, you know, for after-hours for their establishment.
And the other thing I'd like to mention is, a lot of these new restaurants, I wasn't even aware were in our Arts and Entertainment District. You had done a restaurant guide not too long ago, maybe a year or two years ago, if we could update that, and I'm wondering if we could put that in our GWP bill, so folks realize, I mean, we're not just trying to attract folks from outside Glendale, but there's a lot of residents who just aren't familiar with what's going on, and maybe the list of restaurants would pique their interest and help generate some of our own enthusiasm. So if that's possible, I think that'd be a good idea. And the last point is, this is all great, I want to make sure that we maintain a good law enforcement presence. So if that means getting a substation on Brand or on Maryland, I mean, nothing brought the downfall of Westwood faster than that unfortunate crime that had occurred, and if I'm not mistaken, Old Pasadena was the beneficiary of that, because everyone that was from this area, downtown or east, that had been going to Westwood, all of a sudden diverted to Old Pasadena. So we are a safe city, let's keep it safe, and as we start to grow and get some tap rooms and some of this other later entertainment, I think it'd be great if we had some sort of additional presence, whether it's PD, or whether it's security guards of some sort.
One of the, I'm sorry, if I can, one of the conditions that was embedded in our code was, it revolves around security, where you've got to have a number for somebody. If we deem it, I think it's police, they've got to have security. We meet with the downtown commanders, Kevin Dizon is part of our team, so they're aware of all of the moves that we're making, and we cooperate and collaborate on who should we get, how should we get them, what should we require of them, and so we're keeping an eye on that. I know that if we get overly successful, we don't want to overrun our resource, so we'll keep that in mind.
And the seg, I think they use segways or some type of that vehicle in the Americana, Galleria area. Super seg, it's got a third wheel.
If I can just add, my husband and I were driving around Glendale this weekend in the evening, and the bike patrol was out. So I saw a couple of the police.
Yeah, that's also another.
Yeah, they were, they were out on Wilson and Lexington, yeah.
Keep an eye on safety as we, it's very exciting, so I'm very happy, Phil and your team, and Sharon and Darlene, and is Dan Bell involved in any of this?
We try to keep him.
Okay. I'm not going to throw him a compliment.
We'll claim him when he's got a success.
And Alan, I think it's great, and we're, I think you're picking the right type of purveyors that keep us classy, but fun and interesting nonetheless.
And if I might add, I just enjoy your enthusiasm over the whole idea of, you know, improving a city like this, going from good to great, I just, I really like that.
The fun part of the job.
Yes, good, okay.
Just one more comment, Mr. Mayor. Let's keep the focus on that Maryland project. The Promenade will, I think, really make a difference in making Arts and Entertainment District really viable. And you can ask anyone, people love that idea. There's, other than not having the money right now to implement it, yeah, there's really no reason for us not to do it, because apparently engineering works, right? We can do it, we can make it happen, we just, and I'm assuming it's the Department of Finance money that they owe us.
No, this is the money that's sitting with Mr. Manukin in the city's treasury, that the state of California has prohibited us from using, $45 million in bond proceeds that are here at your beck and call, but are barred from your use.
And we're engaged in lawsuits to recover those funds?
This is the subject of legislation that we would hope, maybe this time, maybe this year, they will allow us to use it and tap into it. But this is not the subject of litigation, this is the subject of legislation that would free up these dollars. But the money is sitting there, and this would be one of the projects that could be funded.
And don't you think that once the LEMLE comes, that's going to be a perfect, perfect avenue?
Everyone's going to benefit from it, there's, I mean, I can't think of anyone who's not.
Okay, this is a motion to direct staff to develop the attraction strategy, and we heard the attraction strategy, so it's in a sense we're saying, keep developing, keep on track with all the input. So is there a motion?
So moved.
To?
Second.
To A. Roll call, please.
Board members, Devine?
Yes.
Friedman?
Yes.
Garpetti?
Yes.
Sinanian?
Yes.
Sharon Najarion?
Yes.
And that concludes our business. Is there a motion to adjourn for council?
So moved.
Second.
Council's adjourned. Is there a motion for EDC?
Second.
Second, EDC's adjourned.